Mr. St. Columbia, is he here? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're here, the single agenda item is the budget for 2025. Before we address that, there was a lot of discussion last night about a report from the Division of Environment Quality in the state of Arkansas. So what we provided to you today is a copy of the reports on our Class Four and Class One landfills. On the Class Four landfills, and we provided a copy for October of 2024 to be compared with January of 2025. And the reports are essentially the same. On the Class Four, there's no allegations of any non-compliance. On the Class One, there are some violations noted and pictures taken and shown. And by violation, there's some things that don't strictly meet the regulations and they're spelled out. Last night, Mr. St. Columbia made reference to this, and he had apparently been emailed the document by the state of Arkansas, as were some of the other council members, and I don't know if they had seen it before the meeting. And on the millers, they used your city email address, which I know y'all don't typically use. But Mr. St. Columbia made the allegation that there'd been some untruthfulness on behalf, on the part of the mayor about this report. And while that's wrong, I wanted to share you, with you, the reports, so you can see they are essentially the same. The report does not say any of the drastic things that were alleged or were alleged in the email that was sent out by Mr. St. Columbia, I don't know if y'all got that, where he called the mayor light. And so, just one for the record to be clear, the reports are what they are. They are available online. Landfill is in no greater jeopardy than it was before this report came out. We have some issues to deal with at the landfill. But we have qualified and capable people out there working, including Reginald Wilson. And so what we'll do on the fourth is have him to come down here and make you a report, so you can hear it from him. Would that be satisfactory to you, Mr. St. Columbia?
I received this before the meeting yesterday, and it's on film. I asked the mayor simply if he had a copy of it, and he said he didn't know anything about it.
And that was true?
Sir?
That was true?
I don't know.
I know you don't know, but you called him a lie, and then you sent out an email to your friends this morning and called him a lie. And you didn't even have the courtesy to copy him on your email you sent out this morning.
I knew all about it, I knew about the-
Well, you knew about it because they emailed it to you.
It was sent to him, not to me.
Well, how you get it if it wasn't sent to you?
And I have a copy, I have a copy of it.
Mr. St. Columbia, I'm gonna say this, and we're gonna go on to something else, but you're too old for that.
Sir?
You are too old for that. You should be trying to manage the city's business. If there was something that was wrong in this report, you know we have a landfill manager-
I should be aware about the report.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about you last night and today, and this morning, sent out an email telling folks the mayor was lying, and that's not right. And you didn't have the courtesy, you didn't have the courtesy to send it to the other council members who will sit here tonight, or to the mayor.
I have no comment to make.
Well, you shouldn't, that's what you should've thought of before you hit send on that email this morning. Now, if we could turn to the budget, that's what we're here to discuss. And I'll turn this over to Mr. St. Columbia, Mr. Turner, the mayor.
Just like in the beginning, about saying that there, there are things in particular that, in particular that anyone from the council wanted to discuss, or did you guys just want to discuss it in general?
I see a lot of increases in salaries, and I have concerns about that, I'm just saying.
A lot of what?
A lot of increases in salaries. And I thought that we were sort of trying to hold off on all of that until we got a little bit more fiscally solid. But I see several increases, so, I mean, just share with me, you know, why?
What had discussed last night, like I explained last night, that we have an employee that, one particularly employee that retired, and we thought that she may return, but I think we kind of understand that she probably won't return, so. And so, we had some employees in admin that were taking on those responsibilities. And so, we decided to, for the most part, take that salary from that person and kind of divvy it up among some of the employees that were taking on those responsibilities.
Well, she's not the only person. So, let's look over, I was just sort of highlighting and circling, let me find, there were several-
There's a kind of news saying that that salary was divided among several people, not just one person, like?
Yeah, okay, yes. And admin in particular, that salary for the deputy clerk was divided along a clerk, payroll clerk, and where we consider the project coordinator, project manager.
Project manager.
Yeah, that position was, was a position in human resources, it was a human resource secretary. And we hadn't used that position in a couple of years. We got the, someone came on board, filled that position, but that person was pretty much doing, getting us grants and doing, getting the loans and things that we needed for the water department. And so, we wanted to increase that person's pay, that person was making minimum wage.
And I feel like she deserves an increase.
The other ones were-
If you're on today's, on page thirty?
On who?
On today's.
On today's, then on page thirty? Okay. At least it was lying, I have to point it out. I didn't got today's paper, what's today?
It's on page forty-seven from the, the one we had yesterday.
Oh.
So that's the payroll clerk, the clerk?
Payroll clerk, clerk.
The project manager?
Sorry, thank you. And the, we also include the attorney, the city attorney secretary. For those with administrative things.
That's a fine small.
That, that, that comes out to be, those increases come out to be nineteen thousand dollars. Those increases for those four people.
But there's like ten positions that have gotten increases.
Ten different, for some of them are elected, for some of them are, we made some, some changes for the, the mayor thought that city, the city council should all sit the same way.
So, Ms. Miller, Ms. Miller, can you just go through, just go through the list?
Yeah, let's go through it, so.
Yeah, because I don't see anybody else other than admin, other than the water department admin.
Okay, according to this, and I'm just looking at the 2024 salary versus proposed salary, right?
Yes.
Is that what I'm looking at? Okay, so, in the administration building, the mayor's salary from seventy to seventy-eight, is that right?
Yes, well, okay, we, I was separating that from the electors from the rest, so you know, that's, that's what I brought up to city council, talking about the electors and the city council government. Because everyone, I think all the increases are probably admin, except for the two people in the water.
Okay, and the city treasurer from sixty-seven to eight, I mean to eighty?
Yes.
Chief of staff from sixty-five to eighty?
No.
Chief of staff should be from eighty to eighty.
Y'all moved me to eighty last year.
Okay.
So, that's a typo.
The payroll clerk, clerk, city, from forty-nine to fifty-five. Uh, the clerk from thirty-one to thirty-five, and I understand some of these are people taking on. Uh, city attorney's office, the secretary from forty-nine to fifty-two?
Yes.
The district court officer from twenty-six to thirty?
District court.
The landfill director from fifty-
He's here from sixty-five.
Sixty-five, right?
District clerk.
Just say the name here.
District court.
Yeah, it says the district court. Yeah, well, here it says, if I'm looking at the right thing.
District court officer.
Right there, district court officer?
Well, I don't know.
Right there? Okay, yeah.
Twenty-six to thirty.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just kind of whole figures. The water department-
Always officer.
Yeah, we had the new security guard, well, the district court, the bailiff, I guess they would be. And so, he's starting out at last year's person, that's what the last year's person was making, that's not the new person. The new person is a certified law enforcement officer, so we have a memo that he has to, that we bring him in. And so, yeah, that's, that's, it's an increase in the position.
Because the last person, he was not certified, he didn't get this one, because he didn't get the qualification.
So-
He didn't take it, so the judge got him, officer, and he got him a pay, so that, that was the salary.
So, we have a new person?
Yeah, so that person was, was just, it's not, that is a different person, it's not a-
He's been paid more, but it's not a pay rate.
That's where he started out.
And then, I know down here in the city, the office manager supervisor, forty-two to fifty-five, and that's because of all of the additional paperwork and everything that's having to be done through the state. And then, the billing clerk from forty to fifty-two, that's the same issue.
And we've been putting a lot, the pay with the rate increase, we've been putting a lot on her, but she's doing it herself, in, in, inputting the rates, making sure they're correct. I've taken over the sole, the sole responsibility of reporting, of doing the accounting. And so, I'm kind of telling her I need to have, you know, these reports, these, these reports. So, she's starting, she's having to create different reports that I need in order to get you your, uh, report, your treasury report for the water department. So, she's, she's kind of doing some, some things that she hadn't been doing in the past. And we've been starting to create some different reports for me to do, so I can get you guys your financials.
Hey, Mr. Turner, sorry, custodian, she's full-time now?
Yes. What, what was that, Dr. Miller?
I just asked about our custodian.
Oh.
Because I think at one time she was-
She was contract.
Contract.
Yeah, now she's a employee.
With the animal control situation, I know that we no longer have that position. Who is going to take over the responsibilities? The only reason I'm asking is because I know in my neighborhood, we've had some pretty disgusting situations where we've had people kill a couple of dogs, and one of those dogs is still there and has been there for three or four weeks now. I mean, he made it through the ice storm and everything, so the body, the carcass is still there. Is there going to be somebody who's gonna remove?
Well, I didn't know about it, but typically when I know about it, or Clarence knows about it, we send the, the boom truck back, and they grab it with the grapple.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we typically do and take it to the landfill.
Okay.
But, but, but when we know, yeah.
And, Ms. Miller, that position is, that, that animal control person is actually in the code enforcement office, code enforcement department. And I'm trying to see, I think that position is still in there, it just hasn't been, had it for you.
How many code enforcement people are we going to have, by the way? I'm just curious. Are you gonna go ahead and fill that, that other one?
Well, well, I wouldn't, that was bothering me.
That's part of the attrition that we, so, I guess that's, that's one of the discussions, we actually had to discuss a couple of days.
That might be when I was there, when I was on the trip.
That's in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm just thinking, you know, I do know that-
That's an income source, too.
Yeah.
Well, with that, the two people that, that's a really good job, and, and they like making heaven, they wanted to see if they could take that, that, that money and divide it themselves, and just probably get a part to that person. Because Kyle and Keisha, as you can look at, I think we, y'all, the reporter of occupation, like she's one of them, so. So, they have been collecting way more money than usual, so they do a good job of that, and one cause, and they can shoot it out. So, I think they work good together, so.
Or maybe two full, like a part-time person?
Just, like, well, like, when they go, when they go to lunch, and she's a person, so, Miss, because Miss Sandy is clerks, they, they, they've been taking over, when they go to lunch, or they out in the field, they come and get their occupation, like, or Miss Ramsey does herself. So, we do need somebody that's part-time, when they're out in the field, or when they're just out, or Kyle and Keisha are out.
So, part-time, probably kind of more in, in-house?
Yeah. You know, just get somebody that, just when they're out-
To cover for them.
Or, or, like I said, we cross-trained the different people, city attorney, secretary, or somebody, you know, they know how to do the same thing. So, we just want to kind of make sure, you know, because the more bodies you have, it's, oh, what are y'all doing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. With this animal control, this, as you see, it's thirty, that's an offset, but when, when we asked two people about it, they had yet to come, me and Miss Ramsey talked to the lady who used to be the animal controller, and asked, will she be just a contract laborer for this amount, not a dollar over? She just not respond to neither one of us, so that's something that we've, we've been asking, or the Delta Dogs, or whatever, we've, we've got to them to ask them, so with animal control, we're working, but we don't want to spend, you know, we don't want to go over what we budgeted, so we're trying to make sure that we, we reach out and ask them. Thirty thousand dollars is, is a nice, is a change, but when it runs out, it runs out. Because we, I think we did something with, basically with Galloway, and we did something with her, and we spent way more money for housing, at, at the dog wing. And when we got through with that, we went over, paying for a rental and somebody to come in and clean the place, with it, our place. So, we have to figure out a better way, but this, right now, will have to work for us.
So, we're still working with Delta Dogs and everything to, I mean, assist with like spay and neutering and all of that?
If they bring us, they bring us a contract or something, or bring us something and say, hey, this is what we, we provide, we, we, we will, but, you know, they had it.
Um, and just, this is so random. The equipment that the water department, back when we were having all of the leaks, they mentioned getting some cameras or some special equipment where they could look in the lines and all of that. Are we gonna look at getting that, I mean, at some point? I mean, do we have a little something?
We, we're now trying to get some of the things that we need now, since the water department is doing a little bit better. One of those machines, like the officer, we put it on the line, to see what the leak is, it's like saving five hundred dollars out, so we can start getting stuff like that. But we wanted to say that we did, and, and, so it takes one of our guys training on how to use this equipment. So, so, yeah, listen, we'll be getting that.
And random thought, are we going to be able to provide our officers with those little devices that they need to make sure that all, everything they're recording, they're able to say that the city will get, make sure they have that?
Let me catch up, we got a grant the other day for that, what is it, Miss Emily?
Seventy-three thousand dollars?
Seventy-three thousand dollars, to help with that, and even put new technology in their car, so, and kind of like stay true, when they write your ticket, give you a printout right there, so come check us. So, so, we, we are working, and something that we try not to say out loud, it's because we're worried about it killing, so we try to, when we get it, we're like, this is what we got. I, I think, Mr. Turner mentioned this last night, but we are entitled to, although we haven't gotten it yet, and of course, there's some confusion in the country about federal funding. But we're entitled to about three years on our cops grant that we have.
Yeah, I heard that.
And that'd be reimbursement, that is, we've already spent a month, so we're entitled to get it back as reimbursement, which would probably help us with several things in the police department, or whatever you all decide.
Yeah, I talked to Chief Bill about that at last time today.
So, a, a, a lot of good things are trying to happen in the city, we just gotta clear a couple of hurdles.
And, and in regards, Ms. 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 Miller, about the police thing, too, we had another, we had ten thousand dollars remaining in, in, from a, a previous grant for police equipment, and so they, they have access to that, too, so that'll be about eighty-five thou, close to eighty-five thousand dollars that they can use to get to the equipment that they need.
Eighty-five thou, eighty-five?
Well, yeah, there's a, there, there was an additional ninety-four hundred dollars that was already in the police equipment fund account. So, including that, adding that ninety-four to, I think it was seventy-three, six.
Gotcha, gotcha. I heard it's a crack.
Like I said, I had a lengthy discussion with Chief Bill this afternoon at lunchtime about the cops grant, and the things that he may have wanted to do with the, in the police department. I just told him we'd have some further discussions with myself and the mayor about where he wanted to use those funds.
Swim, the swimming pool employee, will they start in the summer, or how is that?
Yes, they start in the summertime, and let me see how I have them there. They start in the summer.
Okay.
And typically, Ms. Ms., I don't want to speak out of term, but, and Councilman Ethel is here as well, so I don't know what they've decided. They have, we've typically been reimbursed by tourism, so I don't know if they'll continue to do so or not. I'm not sure if they decided this or not, but in the past, they've reimbursed us.
Okay.
But it's their, their part-time, and we, we had to pay them.
Yeah, sure.
Not, they're part-time employees, we, we were paying them as contract ten ninety-nine employees, but the IRS told me that we had to pay them as, there'd be two employees.
Yeah.
And, but, so, we, of course, they don't get insurance or anything like that.
Sure. Is there any way that they can start earlier? Because, only reason why I'm asking is because from another perspective, we, we've, yeah, I'm not gonna start dropping names, but anyway, my, other money, other money allocated, allocated to the pool, I know, I know that it's short-handed. But that, so that the pool maybe could be open longer, you know? Because I know that, that becomes an issue as far as like the funding, with, with funding, and by the time it gets going, like at the beginning of July, it's like the, the summer's over, and that's a good thing for our youth.
Right. I know what you're speaking of, but we, we are trying to make, me and Miss Ramsey have been making sure that a lot of repairs is being done to the pool as you go out there now.
Yeah.
We're working, we held the health foundation, we want something now to put a whole new roof. Because Together for Hope, when they come here, we, we're getting, we sometimes, we'll, we get late, we'll get a late start, because right now, they want us working on the pool now, because the pool has so many issues. Miss Ramsey has took on a job to order paint, get the pool painted in time, and then we, we have to text the water, then when they get out here, the pool that goes past inspection, but it's, it's a lot that that pool needs, so, because we, we did the bathrooms, and things like that, because Together for Hope, the people who come, they pay to come to our city, but when they pay, they got, they, then they got to try to work inside. For the first couple of years, I pressure washed it for free on my own time, because, you know, they would get here, they have box nests inside. You know, we're trying to, Karen Williams has been out there since, been the last year for us this year, trying to make sure that she's applying for the grades, to make sure that we can get the funding to start fixing it, because me and Miss, Miss Ramsey and I have to make sure that they have a problem with the urinals, no shower curse, and stuff like that, so we take care of that.
Ms. Ms. Miller, she might look into-
Recreation, right?
Yeah, it's a blue, anyway, it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, they have a, a grant that's perfect for us. It's a, they deal, you can apply towards parks and recreation, I can holler at her, you know, or you can tell her.
Well, that, that, because she is, she's by, and not, just to say that she, she is by there with-
Yeah, I got you.
Water, and, uh, her, the engineer with water, they're just, but I mean, what I would do is, I, I, it's gonna give us some time on it, so that she can-
Blue and you, I think it's called, a Blue and you.
So, Mrs. Turner's right there.
And they'll give anywhere from, I think between thirty to fifty thousand, that would probably enough to at least do some repairs and for-
Because I think last year, we paid for a motor or something, Miss Ramsey, some kind of motor we paid for, because the motor went out right before they got started.
It was a pump.
So, in, in the pool, we, we try to have it open, first of June, through, through end of July. But I would like to see it open, but it represents Helen, so I, I wish it would look a lot better than it has. But, but I, I make sure that Ms. Ms. Miller's get on it.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can pull that grant, too.
I mean, I'd like to, I guess, explain what, I know we have a lot of, I want to say concerns, I guess, concern about the contract labor. And what, there are a couple of departments that have what, what line item my title is, contract labor. And contract labor is typically services that the city would provide, or things that the city would do, activities that the city would engage in, but they just don't want to hire full-time employees for that, or they don't have the ability to hire full-time employees. And so, we contract with people to do it, like, at one time, we had people doing, filling potholes, or doing street repair, that we didn't have enough people that were qualified in the city to do, or the, the job may have been beyond what the city could perform, so we would contract with someone to, to do that, provide that service or function.
Do we, do we get bids on the contract labor, contracts?
Now, you, you should, now, from, since I've been here in 2015, that my experience, everything that comes for the city council happens to be an emergency. And, but, and you have an emergency clause, because you guys wait, because you, the city council waves competitive bidding. Now, when the department head, or the mayor, whoever it was, Jay, Kevin, or Chris, when they happen to come in, it may, it may actually be an emergency, and they, and they're figuring, you know, just finding out the details of it. And so, it tends to be, from my experience, that everything that comes for the council happens to be something that needs to be done yesterday. And you, the city council typically waves competitive bidding. But the, everything should be, should be bid, if you have enough time to, you know, go through the process.
Who was the largest contract we gave last year?
Contract or?
Who, who did we serve most money to last year?
Quaterbun Fleming guy, Quaterbun Fleming.
Yeah, they, I don't know exactly, man, I have to go.
He was the largest?
Last year?
Contract.
Twenty-four? I, I believe so.
Sir?
I believe so, twenty-four.
You believe it?
Yeah, I don't have it right in front of me.
We can, we can get it to you.
Yes, well.
Do we have a plan for this year for the streets as far as potholes, or repayment, or?
I'm gonna-
That should be like at the top of ours.
It, it, it is.
We're underwater, I said.
It, it, it is, but we're working, I'm working on one thing that, that's gonna free up us a whole lot of money that we can use for that person. I should get an answer in a couple of days, hopefully, from that person, so that she can be able to, if the state is willing to- that person, so she can be able to stay as well, help me do this project. So I'm quite, I'm quietly, I, I, and I, and I wanted to, like, this is, hold on, hold, hold on to this, Miller. But what we, what we did last night, what some of us did last night with hospital. This morning, when I got, I got a text, it said, you know, that the deal is good, but what you all did was maybe like, I'm saying, like, I'm not a business person, and it's something we sell.
From, 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 uh?
No, not, not rich.
No, I know, I know that from us, you're talking about from, from.
No, no, just somebody in there, and said, if I was a business, I wouldn't, I think sometimes
From the conversations at the table?
Yeah, but because we don't wanna scare anybody that potentially are looking to come to us, something that, sometimes we, we have a conversation with each other. And I think it kills us, it kills somebody, potentially say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to Helena, and off of the business, I think we kind of limit how we say this, I feel a certain way about certain things, but I won't say it publicly, because I don't wanna kill what they're trying to do. So it's just like, Miss Miller, I don't wanna, I really wanna tell you what the government's working on, but I don't wanna kill it, because somebody can say, oh, not do, let's not do that, and it kills it, so sometimes we have to be mindful of the table when we're saying, because you want people, even if they, it looks kinda like they don't know what they're doing, just kinda hold it too close to you. Cause what I, what, what I'm trying to do at this high level, if she says yes to that, it frees up seven hundred fifty thousand that we can use for that issue.
They are, I'm very transparent, and I, and I wanna say this publicly, so that people will understand where I'm coming from. What was difficult for me, and I'm coming from a very personal place, is I have a grandfather and I have a father whose picture is out there on that wall. Helena Regional Medical Center is always gonna be very, very special for me, okay, on an emotional level. So I take that, I own that publicly. What I had an issue with is that the original contract said as is. And so I understand, you know, that we got into negotiations, time drew out, nobody wants to come here, all that other stuff. To me, that just sort of felt like we're kind of being strong-armed.
Right.
I could be wrong.
No.
But that's what it felt like.
You're right.
So I'll learn, and I, and I'll respect you on that, I, I get it, you know, I do have a tendency sometimes at this table to open my mouth and say things, but at the end of the day, that just didn't sit well with me. I mean, it just sort of went like, we went from three, then we went to two-four.
We just fought, we just started free-falling.
Yeah, we just started free-falling, and the reality is, there were so many people in the community who really were reaching out, I know, to me, saying, I don't want y'all to sell it at all. You know, and it's just kinda like, gee, you know, I'm trying to explain to them, but y'all, everybody and their mama knows what happens to property that's left, uh, empty in Helena West Town. You have vagrants, you have people who steal copper, they steal the, the this, the that, and we don't need another eyesore, I get that too. And I'm just like, gee, y'all, I mean, why do we have to start here and, and, you know, just kinda like, you know, we're being
Yeah, and every deal was not, every deal was not a good deal.
And, and, and we, we had a right to question that, and if they don't, if they can't deal with being held to the carpet. Well, well, and, and, and I know we're talking about the budget and, and I'm gonna get this, but when, when Helena, when, when Helena Hospital, Helena Hospital, when it was at their peak, we weren't getting anything from them, they, they weren't getting, so the, the city has, the, and the
Yeah, I don't think, none of that was filled, filled towards the city, at least from, from my intention.
Uh, yes, sir, but I'm sorry.
I was frustrated with progress, not the city.
I understand.
It's not the city's fault.
When, 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 when the city has not received a dime from helping the Health Foundation to any of that, it's
Right.
We, the, the, they could've gave us five hundred thousand dollars a year, they gave us nothing, we, we, so this is the first time we getting, so we didn't get, we ain't got nothing, but just said we got a hospital, so the Health Foundation has, as my grandma would say, fatten the frog for the snake, we, we got nothing. They are, and they still got fourteen, fifteen million dollars in, in this trust that, that the city don't benefit from, but they give out community grants that we can apply for, that we apply for, we might get, it might not. But at some point, that, that they, we all need to talk to each other, that's why, that's why, that's why we've lost, and I'm gonna get back to the budget, we've lost so much because we don't talk, we don't run the same circle, I got, we got people out there saying, we got kids, our kids don't play together, our grandkids don't play together. We got lawyers that say, well, they didn't go to school with some lawyer, and, and, and you look at it, so, so, so we, we'll always be, this community will be divided until we start talking, that's why I've been on this thing, we need to talk, leave the world for me to work on about. Like all that, and I, and I, and I'm gonna get back to the budget, I just want you to realize this, the people are looking to come and help, but it's up to us. I don't wanna, I don't wanna play any games, it's up to us to change the face of Helena, now's the time. With, with the hospital, it, it, it is something scary, but, but, and I understand you don't want this to be like, we started at three, you're down at one. I understand it, but, but, but at some point, let's continue to talk, uh, after this, after, after past the budget, we need to continue to talk. And I don't wanna play it back to this table that, oh, okay, I got you there. Because I think what we're doing is trying to show people that we're good stewards on what we got, and we've been, the city is looking a lot better, and it's doing a lot better. It, it, it took us a while to get here, we all came here, we all, we didn't know which way to go, the city was on life support, now it's at a stable position. And, 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 and we can do this together, and I'm still telling people, and back to the budget, I'm still telling people, the doors are open, I wanna talk, I wanna, I want you all to know me, and I wanna know you all, but we got too many, everybody got too many conversations about this, so what's your thought, the assumptions? Mister Ethel has, has been here a while, the same company with Davis, and I, I, I know when I was on the council, Doug used to always ask me, think, tell me, think about what you're gonna say, think about what you're gonna do, sometimes I didn't. But as I'm here now, the same issues that I was raising from the side of the table to the end of the table, I'm understanding that every day, it's something different that I'm learning about the budget, about the process, that I didn't know. And so a lot of, you got a hundred-something employees that you're accountable for, I've never managed it in my whole life. It's just new, this is scary, because you don't know, you always wanna, who wanna play this game called I got you, or embarrass you. And, and people are with you, until they feel like embarrassing, so that's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to learn this. And it's gonna take more than one term, it's gonna take, you all know around the table, last year you came in behind, this year you see a little bit more. And I just want people to be like, just, just, don't call me a liar, don't call me all these names, give me a chance, cause I have to figure, I still have to ask questions, just like, something y'all know, I have to ask. But, and I, but when I don't know, I, I, I reach out to Mister Valley, I reach out to former mayor to ask him, hey, can y'all tell me? And, and I'm, but, but, Miss Miller, back to the question, we're working on, I'm working on something with Paco from Davis, and hopefully she will say yes and take that, go with, but I show more of these things.
Five holes that we paid.
Yes, yes, ma'am, because we got a lot of them.
Mama, how old are you today?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm sorry for getting off the budget, I apologize, but it's, it's shedding a little bit, so y'all know where I'm coming from.
Are we, are we fully staffed now in our police department?
No.
We're close.
Okay, so when, so these, these are I want to say projected budget, but this, this is a budget, in a best-case scenario that we had all of our.
Yeah, I think we were, we were having some, before you got here, they were having a lot back and forth. About, I think at one point, we had thirty people, and so I would budget for thirty. And then we got to a point where they had fifteen people, and we were budgeting
For thirty.
For thirty. Some, some of the city council members just said, okay, why don't we just budget for fifteen, and then as you need them, you just come in and ask for them. And so that worked, because they didn't really get more than twenty, I don't, I don't think. And then I think they just finally just came to a compromise where, you know, I just have to continue to come to the, to the, to the council meetings, and I think they came to a compromise of twenty-five officers, and that's what we said today. But I'm thinking that's what I have in here is for twenty-five police officers, police officers, not including the, the staff, yes.
How many, how many do we have on staff?
Ten.
That's better than what?
What, what, oh, but, but Dr. Miller?
Last year, we had about five.
Well, when you, when you ask that question, uh, I wish that we could consider, uh, because we, we, we got this money here in the budget. I wish that we can find a number, because Marv, we, we pay what, twelve dollars coming in? Twelve dollars, Marv pays fifteen, Marion pays sixteen. You can move some of this money around to get some, some more officers, because when you look at payroll, and you see the final number, okay, from the test, uh, one officer, you pay for two officers, sometimes you pay for three officers, what it is. And I mean, you know, and you wanna make sure our officers are efficient and effective, but we, we, we paying is it okay, yes, okay, Missy, we paying one officer, seventy-five months, he makes more than the body sheet, she may, or they make more than the body sheet. And you, you wanna kinda see how can we raise from twelve to fourteen or fifteen, to get people coming, so you have an A shift, B shift, and a C shift, seventy-three, three eleven, eleven seven. So nobody will get all this overtime, and that's, because, because how good are the officers who work twelve hours, twelve-hour shifts, seven days a week? How they're effective? And we, and we wanna make sure that, that what, what if we get an officer who say, well, I didn't get enough to do last night, and something happens. So we wanna look at, how can we not just stack the numbers and spend more money than we're spending, but if, if you run the payroll, you'll see that some of these officers are getting these high salaries, and, you know, what they said, with Mister Ethel, who's always saying, what, what they said, if you, if you don't get it, you don't get, you don't get it, you don't get a raise, you don't get your minimum. So we wanna, we wanna stop that culture, and make sure that we paying a decent wage to these officers.
Okay, and then I know we also talked about, at least, at least I said I wanted to look at our sanitation workers, trying to give them a raise, I mean, I don't know if that's funding for it, but
That's true, that's what we need to start.
We said we
And it, and it's, like, whatever you, whatever I wish to do, um.
Well, I mean, later on, I, that's talk with City Attorney, and like I said again, with Chief Police today. And, uh, we, some of the things we were discussing, the issue that we had initially, what, what that I have, is that our revenues, because of the jail, and our tax revenues going down, it's kinda hard to sustain a, a massive, like when we do cola increases, even though they may be two or three percent, they turn out to be three, four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right.
And to sustain it year after year after year, it's kinda, it puts a little pressure on our, um, financial stability, so one, one thing we were considering was maybe use, particularly for the police officers, just, just reimburse them for the cops grant, to see if we can get them like a one-time payment, just like a bonus or a one-time payment. And so it's, so instead of putting that pressure on us to go from year to year to year to year, at least we can try to, yeah, salary increase, we can at least try to do something uh, this year.
I thought about something, if, if you can't, if we can't give a, a, a raise, you know, if, if we look at, as we look at our, our finances, I think if we look at it, to, to make everybody, that if we just do a, a cost of living adjustment, and probably if, if we, if we, if we watch our spending, in, in sometime in November, just do a one-time payment of a cost of living, so that, that they can have that. Instead of just, and we can just look at our finances as they come, instead of just saying, give this raise right here, and then you say, well, well, we can't. But if, if we start trying to make plans to put money back, or just a, a one-time cost of living adjustment in D, November, then, you know, before the things go on, I just tell them, should we just get a one-time incentive, twelve hundred dollars, six hundred dollars for whatever we can, and that's an incentive, say, hey, listen, we can't do what we wanna do, but we're trying, as we look at our finances that come in. And I think that, you know, you are good about wanting to know how we're spending money, if we just keep on task, we're just kinda managing what we're doing. And as revenue come in, we can start making plans, so that everybody can work, I can't be bad about a raise, but I can't give you, we can't work to give you this.
And, and also one of the stipulations of the cops grants that we can't use that money to get raised.
Right.
We can't give them raises with, with that, the cops grant.
What are you using for, uh, administrative calls?
Administrative, well, you know, uh, not administrative calls, but, uh, employee, uh, payroll. So it could be salaries and
I think salaries are not, are not a
Yeah, and, but not, yeah, not a raise, and we can also use for equi, uh, uniform, I mean, uniforms.
I, I was just, I had just a little perspective on the police officers, and I, I hear, and they mentioned it with Marv and other departments of pain. And it sounded like they're using that in an effort to recruit, but I think the focus ought to be on what you need to retain the officers you have, because all of them are young, basically, uh, and we train them, get them to where they are, we just want to find a way to keep them, if we can, whatever that might be.
Are they still going to the academy? Do they still go to the academy?
Yes, they Yeah, they still go to the academy.
Do they get like a bonus or anything after they finish?
They move from like officer to officer first class, and it, it may be a few hundred dollars, whatever the budget says, man, not a whole lot. But, yeah, and, and so, and I said that recruitment based on my history with the city. Uh, one of the, the challenges that I had when I was the mayor
Yeah.
was that we could not get enough officers, and we may have had twenty-five or thirty, then one, four, I don't know what the number was. But whatever the number was, we couldn't increase it, and there was a bunch of things we tried to do to increase it, so it's been difficult to recruit officers above a certain number.
Did you find that, cause I, I, I heard this from officers, you know, a while back. So when they finished the academy, I've heard it a lot times, we were like basically paying, we were like basically paying for their training, cause it was like after they got their, got the academy, then they would go to some other
Well, well, they required, they required to work for us a year or two, or that, that, that other agency has to pay us the, the academy fees back.
Okay, good.
Uh, but beyond that, yeah, you know, that's what I'm saying, we need to try to find a way to retain, uh, those officers, and, and we want more people to be interested in making Helena home. Yeah.
And Dr. Miller, they also get, officers get certificate pay as well for them.
Yeah, now, this council approves certificate pay.
If they, if they leave the state of Arkansas, we don't get anything back home.
Right, yeah.
If they go to Mississippi or Tennessee, which is paying a lot more, we don't get anything, we don't cook anything.
Right, so again, that's why I mentioned focus on retain or retention of the officers, as, as much as you are on
So Mayor, why don't we tonight hire five more policemen and give them a raise to fourteen dollars an hour?
We wanna make sure the chief is not here, I mean, we need to just make sure that Mister Turner and the clerk, and I can see if you, if you hire, if you, if you hire them at fourteen dollars an hour, you definitely put fourteen people in the budget. So what I'm saying is, we, we try to look at that to see how
I mean, they, they do get, the, the, the twelve, whatever is for interim, they get fourteen fifty or fourteen sixty-five hours. Uh, graduate to academy, there are, and those positions are in, in the budget. So the chief can hire people right now, he can hire people that are already certified. They have an Arkansas certification, be a full-time police officer at fourteen fifty right now, if he had the applicants, if he had, if he decided to hire someone. I don't know what his application list is, I don't know how many applicants he has, how many people he uh, wanting to hire, if he has any applicants, I'm not sure, but he has the ability, he has open positions, and I'm sure he's advertised for them.
Can the cops can grant the asylum?
I'll have to look into it, I believe that, I believe that you can, I don't wanna say for certain, but I believe, I believe that you can. But I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say for certain, but but I, I, I think some of the discussion with, with that is, in vain of what Mister Valley was saying was that you, you, you kind of, you don't wanna Mister Val was saying was that you, you, you kinda, you don't wanna have this thing, well, can you get, all your new officers are getting this, 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 and so you kinda wanna be able to do some things for the, for the current officers as well. But we, they have discussed it, and that's something I need to look into, I suppose talk with this guy from the Department of Justice in DC sometime, so he had to return a phone call, so I'm, I'm looking forward to talking to him, so that's something I can ask him about. Yeah, it's, it's, I can, I mean, if you, if it's any other thing that you, I'll just move on to it. I mean, you can interrupt it at any time, but so another one of the things that. We were talking about was yesterday was the demolition, and, and, and I guess Mister Val could probably answer, we do, we have another seventy-five thousand dollars. In sanitation department for demolition, and before, uh, they, we weren't using a lot of it, but I think the last couple of years need to use. Kind of, uh, a lot is going toward demolition, and so that's one of the things, and I know that was one of the P P's and councilmen, they, council member day, was the sanitation. Uh, being, uh, appropriated in the budget, so we do have.
But turn, if I can go backwards just a minute, the, the Chief Police in his most recent Department head report said that he. Conducted employment interviews and they're going through a background check phase with some people, but he also reported that we had one. Uh, dispatcher to attend a letter of resignation effective January twenty-fourth, and what he said is not in the report, is that she went across the parking lot to the s- state-run jail. Cause they're paying more money than we're paying, uh, and I, I'm, I'm just interested to see if some, uh. We as kid lawyers going to challenge that arrangement that the state now has with our county, in that, basically, we as citizens voted to build. Fund and operate a jail that we'd have access to, and the county has wished that away, they gave it to the state for a dollar a year, a thousand dollars, whatever they get. Uh, and, you know, ideally, the state, since they got billions of dollars in surplus, just buy that little old jail out there, and then we could get our money back. You, you see what I'm saying, cause we, we can't take our prisoners to this jail at this point, they don't have room for them. So when little Johnny breaks in sister girl's house, he gonna be back on the street. Even though we voted, and we're paying the tax for the jail out there. So that's just an aside, but she left because the state is running the jail, paying more money than the county was paying, and certainly paying more money than we are paying. The jail is full, no, they, they have a small allocation for us, the jail is primarily for the state inmates, so I think we have a slot, maybe twenty slots out there now, maybe.
They're still renovating and cleaning the jail out there, now they're not taking any prisoners right now, we're having to go out of town with our prisoners. I just paid Marianne a jail about eighteen hundred dollars for housing our prisoners, they take women when they have space, but.
And, and I think what they, what they, what they're going to do in the jail, I think, she, uh, she said, she is the governor, so they're gonna, and the, this is true, the beds out there. And that's why you see the, the, the fence, it's like it's taken down, but it's a higher fence for it up. So, they, they could add a kitchen in, and we'll just work at that, hoping, and hopefully, we can get what I, what I'm asking. That seven hundred thousand dollars back, you know, so, so if she can increase the debt, we can, that's what I work with her, if we can get that.
Yeah, but the issue is, we don't know the arrangement with the, with the county and the state, so we're gonna have to look into that to see. All right. And again, I, I mentioned the increase in the debt service for the sanitation trucks, the new sanitation trucks. That adds about a hundred and, what did I say, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the budget, and like I said yesterday, everything is pretty much. Copy paper, ink, paper clips, utilities, fuel.
And when, when you hire a sanitation, uh, I do want us to, I talked to Chief Wilson today about the. Norak. Told me today that, uh, that, that we're not picking up their trash. And the manager told me that that's about a hundred thousand dollars, that another company is coming in, getting their trash. So Mister Evans, this is to you, said, said, by roll-off trucks. And they said that Serge's, Norak's, and. Uh, PPS, those, those two companies spent almost a year, like, three million dollars for trash. The, like, it's coming out there, mid-south, could be there in roll-off, drop roll-off, whatever, get the trash, so it would be good. If we invest in these two roll-off trucks for our land, you know, so we can start to get that trash in the industrial park, that will bring us some additional revenue. Uh, he told me today, he said, I'll be happy to, um, talk to, go talk to Chief Wilson tomorrow, and if there, we can open, and we need to get some material data to show what they're going with. But we probably can invest in a roll-off, two roll-off trucks for you, so that we can start, cause we don't get the hospital trash. We need all that to come in, it comes to help us. We need, we need to, to go into a, I just started to say, a lot of people inside, so, business, uh, gotta roll off this. We get it, but we're not making the money that some people haul and stuff, and some people want to be sitting between. So we just, that, on, on that side as well, just wanted to show them, and I'm always looking to see how can the city get some more revenue.
Is there anything in the budget that, anything was, we just can't live, you know, we just. This is a non-negotiable, this has got to be changed, this, we gotta fix it, we gotta add this. Maybe that might be what we're starting, or if it, you know, it's like there were some questions outside, or.
I, I think, for me, the issue is, if you do some pay raises in this budget, next week, every other part of the city is gonna show up, saying, what about me, what about me, what about me? If you don't, if you don't, if you're gonna do them. Do them. The partial stuff is just, it's a recipe for disaster.
You're talking about any, like, like, you may have like one employee that's getting a raise, or are you just talking?
Well, you got more than one.
Okay. Yeah, but, I'm talking about, for instance, um, I think I saw a quick, like, in a water company, one toilet was getting a little bit more, are you saying it would be a problem if you give that person a raise?
And so, what I'm saying is, then the police department's gonna come, then the fire department's gonna come, then the streets gonna come, and sanitation's gonna come, and the landfill's gonna come. You, you gonna have everybody come in and do it, week by week by week by week, and then you die by death of a thousand cuts, instead of just addressing it. And really doing it in a comprehensive manner where you allocate what you think you can do, versus telling the next person, I can't, well, no, 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 now I spent it all. And at this point, for me. You know, the newspaper told me to leave behind all some, some bills. I say the newspaper, because it didn't get it at this table. If we have that issue, where are we on that issue? And before we start handing out pay, pay raises, where are we in terms of cash flow? And, and so. I, I, I have, I, I have a lot of complaints that I'm trying not to, I'm, I'm biting my tongue off, and so I, I just, I, I don't.
Well, don't bite your tongue, I mean, we need to hear it, so we know what direction we're going to, you might not be looking at it, or not looking at it as thoroughly as you are.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I, I, I get it, but I know what comes down the road, kinda like we talked about what comes down the road last night, and I, I know what comes down the road. And that is, everybody comes in behind us and says, what about me? And now, if you give it all out on front end. What's on the back? How much do we have to actually, do we have in? And if we do, we need to figure out what that is, and then how to allocate it, instead of saying, this person gets this, this person gets this, this person gets this. And now, like, well, wait a minute, how do I, how do I take care of the rest of the people? You said sanitation, you really wanna look at sanitation, um, you know, I think. Police chief came here a couple of years in a row saying, you know, what about my guys in my department? And I think, you know, we said, wait, 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 and then if the way it is, oh, wait a minute, if we gave it away to somebody else, then that's, that's like, that's, that's a bad deal.
I have a question.
I didn't, I didn't come, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I don't have a vote around this table, but I want y'all to, and I think every employee deserves a raise, I, I don't think we pay them enough. But when we give raises. What do you want me to tell these creditors that call me and say, you gave raises, and you could've paid my bill?
Well, Ms. Ramsey, I've been wanting you to say that for a long time.
Well, you know, I mean, y'all, I have tried to send y'all memos of, of our revenue and our bills, and. I've got probably a million five in bills laying on my desk, how do y'all want me to pay them? I don't care what you get from the hospital, it's not gonna be enough, I don't care if you win the lottery, it's not gonna be enough. And as sure as it hits the paper in the morning that we're looking at raises for employees, I'm gonna get a call from about twenty-five or thirty local vendors. Saying, Ms. Ramsey, you still owe me for twenty twenty-two, when are you gonna pay me? So somebody tell me, I mean, if y'all would like to field these creditor calls, I will be more than happy to give them to you, especially when they call you at nine o'clock at night.
Ms. Ramsey, I, I, I agree a hundred percent, that, I think the issue is, and I'm glad you said that. It's the conversation I've been trying to have for you, I said, when do y'all get together and talk about this stuff, remember I asked that question six months ago? See, because the problem is, is it's unfair to us, the city council, because we're not here every day. We appropriate, but we don't actually manage, and so when we get asked the question, what do you want me to do? I didn't know on the front end, I didn't get a chance to say, well, spend this part here, spend this part there, I just get a notice that something is due, and it's out of hand. And so it's unfair to me now, because I didn't get to manage it on the front end, and that's not our job, it's not our job to manage day-to-day for them. But we can see, I can see, I don't know if everybody, I can see what's happening, and when I read in the newspaper that we haven't been paying, uh, what was it, retirement, I think? April, okay, and. Maybe we got some payroll taxes that we owe, we got all of this stuff that we owe, we got all these vendors, people, and, and I hear this all the time, people are calling, people are calling. And I'm saying, well, at some point, somebody has to just stop, but I don't have any control over, I have no control over what goes after doing.
Okay, so can, can that be confirmed, cause that was a question, payroll, payroll tax, we owe payroll, do we owe payroll tax? We, I know that was, we did, and how much?
I'll have to look at, I have to, I can see it, I don't know, I know we, we.
Ask me, fifty thousand or something.
I know we, we had a fifty thousand dollar, we, eighteen thousand with the state, I have to look at federal.
So, that's for, that was for the previous year?
That was, that, you know, that fifty-eight thousand, they talked to us about, but this actually, I have to go, I have to look at the federal, give you, I'm, I'm gonna answer that.
No, I'll give you an example, on the, the non-uniform employees after payroll. I have three days to pay into the April, it's usually twenty-six thousand dollars, don't always happen. The policeman after payroll, to the tenth of the next month to pay into their locker, it's eighty or ninety or a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how much payroll they've brought. It's not always there, they don't take partial payments, you get behind. And for the last two years, since it all came out about us selling the hospital, the big vendors have called, have you sold your hospital yet, or are you gonna pay? Some of them called and say, okay, now give me your song and dance again, I said, the hospital hadn't sold, but you're on the list.
And, and I can say this, when we get big bills, like ninety-six thousand dollars, we pay them quickly, so gotta remember, we, we, we. We pay a bulk of bills, this, I think the first of, this month, we paid what, ninety-six thousand dollars to, to, for, for something, we paid another fifty-six thousand dollars. So we're paying, but our, our big-ticket items, we pay them first, so when, when something come in for ninety-six thousand dollars, I sign the ticket. So, we, 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 we have a lot of expenses when it comes to, to, truck, trucks. Uh, and, and it ain't just, it, when people say that we waste our spending, we paying high things, health insurance, what was the health insurance?
Health insurance runs about sixty-three to sixty-five thousand a month, the, the bills the mayor's talking about is, our fleet insurance was eighty-eight thousand. Our property insurance was seventy-four thousand, it all had to be paid by December thirty-first. Uh, the municipal league defense fund dues was fifty-four thousand, it had to be paid by December thirty-first. I've set up a payment plan for our workers' comp premium, it's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and they're graciously gonna do like they do every year, they let me pay it off in three payments. Otherwise, we lose our workers' comp, and you've got a truck payment also coming up in February for about ninety-three thousand dollars. Sanitation truck payment, so.
I think that what Mrs. Ramsey just said, and what Don alluded to, there's no raises to be given, we need to pay our bills. We need to pay the bills first.
And, 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 and.
Period.
And, 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 and it's fine, but we, we are, we are paying the bills, well, wait, 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 if you let me finish. Now we are, since we get out, now since we started getting sanitation fees, we couldn't pay, because we weren't getting all the money we, we were supposed to get. So when you getting, when, 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 when you, when they giving you what they can give you, they're not just holding, when they give you what they, now, we, how much do, how much sanitation fees did we receive this month, Ms. Ramsey? From the water department?
Right now, I've got, uh, probably, I haven't gotten anything for this, well, she hadn't given me anything, I get it after the twentieth, cause they have to wait till everything's calculated.
So, so.
Should be probably a hundred and thirty-five thousand, hopefully.
But, but, but she, but she has been giving us large sums of money.
Thirteen thousand last month, yeah.
So, so, so we had been getting there, so now that, now that she, now that she's able to be solid, she's giving us what we need, so we, 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 we are, we are beginning now.
So I'm saying, but we need to do.
I, I understand it, but let me finish, cause I want people to understand, that we, we, now that we're getting the revenue. We, we, we're beginning to get, catch up on our debt, and we're paying our bills, so when, when, when it's hard about the end of last term, it has put us in place to receive money to pay our bills. Because we getting these big-ticket items, taking ninety-six thousand dollars, franchise out of this, like this, yeah, it's, it's hard, but, but these are bills that's always gonna come. Your health insurance, fleet insurance, all this is gonna come out.
So what I'm saying is, after we get to a zero balance of what we owe everybody, from all the money that we're getting, the city owes nothing, then let's talk about raises, don't talk about it now.
If that's, I mean, and if that's what you wanna, you want, if that's what you wanna do, then that's what you can do.
Now, we're gonna try.
I, I have no vote in that.
Huh?
I have no vote in that.
I, I didn't understand, I have no what?
I have no vote in that.
You have no vote, okay. I just don't like people calling Ms. Ramsey at nine o'clock at night, wondering we're gonna get paid, and she gotta give the same, same story over and over, you're on the list. Got people in town, why can't y'all pay your bills?
But, but, uh, uh, do they call you when they get paid?
They what?
Do they call you when they get paid? Because guess what, the same people are calling, we started doing business with them month after month after month. But if we don't do business with them, they'll call us and do a business with somebody else. So, I think that we, we, we're paying. But, but, but we, we, we were losing money. And this is not to justify it, because we have, the city has been losing money since, what, two thousand fifteen? Losing money because we got leaks here, leaks there. And then, we get to the point where, I mean, but we have the pressure to fight it, that's what we're gonna do.
Let, let, let me be clear about what I'm saying. Because on the one hand, I, I, I hear all of the, the, the big bills or whatever, but, you know, I, I think we made some bad choices. I think we made some bad choices when it comes to some debts that we incur and some things that we choose to do that we don't have to do. That being said, I think there's some people, some, well, not suggesting we do it in this, in this, in this move, this next move in terms of adopting a budget. I think there's some departments that we need to look at retaining good people. Uh, police, we wanna make sure they have what they need in terms of equipment and that they get paid well enough to, to, to retain people, to retain good officers. Uh, some of our other departments have good people who need to be retained. The problem is, I don't get to decide who those people are. And I don't get to decide what it takes to retain them. We got bad apples, I don't get to decide when they hit the door. We got some problem people, I don't get to decide when they hit the door. But we need to address those issues. But we need to pay off some debt. So, we need to get caught up. I'm not saying we gotta get to zero, but we need to get to a point where as a business, we don't spend more than we take in. For sure. As a business, we don't need to spend more than we take in. And when, the most frustrating part of being on the council for all these years is I've come to understand that this budget really doesn't matter. It just doesn't matter. We can talk about it for the next month, and this, why I didn't say anything this time around, because it really doesn't matter. When the money gets spent, it just gets spent. And we could ask you along the way. And so, what I want us to do is to try to adhere to the budget as best we can. Pay off our debt, become solvent, we've talked about this for years and years and years, become solvent. And I think if we actually try, if we actually try, we'll see some positive results. If we actually try. And for all the years that I've been here, I'll be honest to say, I have never really seen an effort to try. Because along the way, when it looks good, people see other stuff that they want to, and it goes sideways. Instead of just, okay, it's okay this month, let's see if we can do it two months in a row. Let's see if we can put it together and have three good months. Let's pay people. Let's make sure we don't, we get all the things that we have to do. Payroll taxes, retirement, health insurance, let's try workers' comp, all those things that we have to do. Let's try to make an effort to do it. And then the equipment, it, it's gonna happen, equipment breaks. If we got people who can't take care of it, let's figure out what it takes to hire people who can take care of it, because it's an investment. And I know it's a lot, I know it's a lot. I know it's easier said than done. I have never felt like we actually made an effort to do it. I'm on the outside looking in, I'm on the outside looking in. But those are my frustrations, and that's why I, 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 to be honest, I tried to remain silent through all these discussions.
And it's hard to make an effort when everything is, everything is, is breaking down. It's hard to make an effort, you know, when you've got sanitation trucks are down, and you gotta get a contract to pay them to come in and empty your trucks. It's, it was, it's hard to make an effort when all your landfill equipment was down when they came in. And, and you know, and we, in, in order to keep up, you gotta spend money to keep the day-to-day operation going. I would love to came in with, with, with a landfill, with equipment. I would love to came in at the mayor's office with, with a water department, they need a well, they need all these, all these lines busted. I would love to come in with a street department. All these things that kind of, what I could've got us to solve it for, but when I came in, everything was just out of whack. So, I, I, I do understand that, and it's, it's kind of like sitting, sitting at the head of the table. When things happen, uh, you hearing this, my garbage ain't getting picked up, I don't have no water. All these things are coming, actually, you can tell me, well, I, I gotta do something. Because the, 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 the people don't wanna hear, uh, we came, but my trash ain't getting picked up, people don't hear that when I, I turn my faucet on, I see a water, there's not any water. So, I would love to have come into the mayor's office with things already fixed, so that I could try to say, well, let's put this back, let's save this, or let's do this. Did. And, you know, and, and as now, that things are looking a little brighter, I'm trying to. But I, I can't, when, when, just a month, not even a month, though, y'all, we spent eight-hundred thousand dollars on trucks. After I could show that we were renting the, renting trucks, paying way more than we should have. But I would love to come in to something that was kind of already managed. Even now that we got these new trucks, we're managing the way they take care of our vehicles. Because we can't keep spending that kind of money, but I, I didn't come into that. And I wanted city to be solvent, I wanted city to be able to pay its bills. But when I came in, there was no, I, I had to spend money to give us what we needed to be. And I, and I'm not blaming anybody before then, I take full responsibility, yes. Part of this is some of my fault, because I, I came into a place that was already what it was. And, you know, I, I am trying to make sure that we, uh, get the city in a better financial shape. Right now, with, with having the equipment that we have, we, we can get there. But before now, we couldn't, because all our money was going on renting equipment to make sure that we could keep the city going. But I promise you that, uh, my, my, my next two years here, well, next year, next year, we'll, we'll, we'll work on just that.
I think that we just need to forego, um, the raises for right now. And to hold off. Um, I sort of find myself echoing what, um, Attorney Atlee and what Mr. Masina says in light of what Ms. Ramsey just shared. We are really in debt. And if we can't, um, give everybody something, because I have to agree, you know, we, we've heard from the police department, we've heard from sanitation, we've heard from a lot of people, you know, well, think about us, remember us, you know, this sort of thing, just in the amount, little amount of time I think. And to what Mr. Masina said, you know, it's just really bad business. You know, when you owe everybody in town, and you owe all these vendors, but you got time to give four and eight thousand dollar raises. I mean, I'm just looking at what it looks like in here, and I understand that you're saying that, you know, the, the cost, whatever. So, I'm just saying that to me, it makes sense just to forego all these raises for right now. Let's take the money that we have, pay as much as we can towards our debt, get that down, and then maybe come back to the table next year. If we're, because we've got, you know, money coming in, we've got a lot of stuff going on, it appears to be really positive. And maybe then we can look at addressing some of this, and addressing everybody, you know? I mean, that's just my thought.
So, what you're saying is, the proposed salary increases that are in this budget, we need to delete?
For now, yes.
For now? I think that's a good idea.
Let me say this, and I too agree with what's been said as far as, um, the debt of the city. And I too am tired of hearing about, we can't pay our bills, we'd rather be payroll, I am. There's some good things that are going on in the city, but we definitely need to get out of debt. But, going back to this budget, the people that are doing the chief deputy, city clerk's duties, I know we spoke about the payroll clerk a couple of months ago, moving her up because she had taken over more responsibility. And whoever else is doing this, the clerk, the project manager, I mean, I can let you explain, because you know more about it than I do. But what about those people?
I mean, I think they do, but here's the thing. So, what do we say to these officers?
No, I mean, to the people that have added responsibilities, that's all I'm saying.
Well, in essence, I mean, the police officers, because they're short-staffed, they're taking on extra responsibility. Because they're, you know, in a, they have a problem. You know, I mean
Just like, just like, just like, care, I said, the project manager, is that the same person that's the city clerk too, or those two different?
No, that's the one with the twelve million dollar grant.
Right, right, right. That's the city, that's the clerk?
That's the project manager.
That project, okay. Maybe we are, may, may, maybe, maybe you, you, we might look at too, I mean, in the future, people in the future, and some of her upcoming propose, propose, which actually, she, she, she might come out way more lucrative this way. In the grant writing, she got a percentage, uh, from the ambient costs, from the grant, writing this up there, she, she would make a heck of a lot more money that way than she would be locked into a salary.
So, would you rather replace the person that's leaving?
What, who's leaving?
She's already gone.
The lady that's not the
She's gone?
Uh, the, no, no, not that person.
Okay.
The chief deputy, that's not coming back.
So, doesn't mean Why don't you, you were talking about, the ones that they, the raises that they've got in there for, that they talked about at the beginning of the meeting? If you do those. And then, I know one thing you might think about is, if you give, say, a quarterly bonus, uh, that is, that's not added to their salary, so we don't have to pay pension on it or anything. And pension, and pension makes their hour, if you give them a raise, the hourly rates are going up, the pensions are going up. But if you get a flat-line bonus, which is what the city used to do years ago, it didn't affect the hourly rate, they got more money. It doesn't make the pension go up and the taxes and all that. Maybe do that until you can get stable. I mean, the hospital money, I don't know how much is gonna be left for us to pay bills, you know? We can get a head start on that.
Well, we can't bet on something we haven't got yet.
Yeah.
I wouldn't bet on something we haven't received. And number two, I, I'm, I'm going along with Don. I think, why don't we look at this situation in ninety days? See how we have paid some bills, but paid some bills that we owe. And Sandy can tell us how much we're doing better in ninety days.
If you don't have a influx of money coming in, you're not gonna be any better in ninety days, because the revenue's not there.
I thought we were getting, take longer than ninety days.
The sale, the sales taxes are down, the, you, you don't get that much from state turnback anymore, because it's based on population, which is dropping. Uh, this year, our sales tax from the, the Tucson County and the city Tucson sales tax, I got four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Your payroll's a hundred and forty-three thousand every two weeks. So, you don't have a lot of revenue coming in, so I can't pay a lot on the bills, you know? We do what we can, but it's like
As far as that project manager position, what, what do y'all, I mean, y'all, what do y'all think about that though? If she got a percentage, that, that person, that, that person got a percentage. It, it would be good, because that person would make, they would, and, and it would be more, a bigger incentive for them to win grants.
And Dr. Miller, to your point, that's why I, I was just saying, you know, to stick there, if we want to just give her a percentage of what, what she's getting, we're talking
Yeah, but you have, then you also have, you have, um, not incidental, but it's a part of the grant that is, this is basically for ambient costs, and it could be anywhere from two percent to twelve percent, depending upon what, what formula you're using. But at twelve percent, I don't know. I mean, you talk about twelve percent on sixty-five thousand dollar grant, that's a lot of money. Yeah, it might not, you might not wanna do that much, but, um, it would be a huge incentive.
And I talked about
Because she's not winning.
It's just, so, so So, what I would like for us to do, I know you all are seeing, uh, about this rally. You know how we, when, when deals come, when deals come to, how we deal with the water department? Has invoices coming? We collect those for what, what I've been taught, the water department. What I've been taught from the water department, from the, from the person paying the bills or everything. If you're not in queue, you don't be paying. Has to come here, like we did the, the Quaterbrook Crawford and Jeff Plon. Mr. Gatto agreed after these bills, and she put them in queue, you weren't in this queue this week, you didn't get paid. And she could pay you all, she, she paid, well, we had the money to her now, she put everybody who was in queue, they got paid. And you, you, you didn't get a ticket the other day. We approved by the body, when the body saw it, and you paid. That, that's something that I wanna do. It's hard, so you have to see what is going out, or have some, some knowledge of what's, what's being paid. Because I, I knew it. Since I, I've been on the city council, I was on the city council for twelve years, I've heard the same shit. But whatever the fix you're gonna send to our, the
So, we have to maybe in the next quarter, we get to the end of March eighth, we look and see, see what funds, look at, and if there's funds for, uh, bonuses.
I, I, I think that probably that's, I mean, that's my preference. I like the idea of not being tied to it for long term. I like that idea. You can target certain employees and give them a bonus. But it's not a lo, a long-term commitment, it doesn't have the benefits and all the taxes that goes, that go with it, so I, I do like that idea. I just wanna see, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm hearing this, I'm hearing Ms. Ramsey saying, well, that I still got this much in payroll and this many people or whatever. And what they told me, so we don't need to add to payroll, right, because we just don't. Or at least let's, let's, let's figure out where we are. And I'm not, I'm not even trying to set a deadline, I'm not trying to say ninety days or whatever, I'm just saying, we, we should be able to figure out, because we just the cash flow's gonna change because of the sanitation fees and the, and the water rate increase. So, we should be able to know going into February how we're doing, as, as we progress along, we should know how much cash we have on hand. Uh, but, I mean, and then the hospital, it may or may not sell on Friday, if it closes on Friday, we'll have cash. We got some debt we need to pay. I wanna see us address some of the debt that we have, I wanna see us pay whatever water-related expenses we have, I wanna see it at zero. And I want us to manage it. Not just, I can do this now, because we got some cash over here, I wanna see us manage it. And management, for me, means what's most important. And maybe we won't take care of everything, but if I can't do everything, then maybe I can do some stuff. Again, we don't get to make those decisions. This is the only time of the year where people listen to us, really about money. This is it. On February first, it's over for me, I just hear about it. So, that's my two cents work. But yeah, I do like the idea of bonuses and targeted bonuses to people who we wanna try to retain and who do good work or whatever, whoever they may be, and whatever department they may be in. And it allows us also to kind of stagger it out. And plan for it, and do it in a, in a way that doesn't impact us on a long-term basis, so.
Okay, so, I, I'll just, I, I'll take the increases out, except for the one person. And I'll present it to you guys tomorrow, I'll send it to you sometime in the morning. You can review it, and then sometime tomorrow, you guys can You can review, and then sometime tomorrow, you guys can approve.
We can approve them.
Okay.
What were you saying?
The only change, the only, the only thing I'm not gonna change is the district court, because that's where he started. He has certification, that's where he starts. All, all of them's coming.
Okay.
So what are you gonna do now?
Take all of the, the pay increases out. Except for the district court officer. Because that's, that's his starting, starting pay for the previous district court clerk. The district court officer, his, he, he started out at a certain rate, that's why. So I'm gonna leave it the same, take all of the.
About all these other, all these other salaries.
All unpaid increases, all unpaid increases are coming out.
They're reducing all these?
Yes, all, all other increases are coming out. All other increases are coming out. Except for that one. Except for the district court officer, yes.
So all these proposed salary increases.
Everything is coming out. Council member, Saint Columbia, all of them are coming out. And you can, yeah, you can make a tentative approval.
You're gonna make Ms. Davis.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget for, um, twenty-twenty-five, um, with the exceptions of the pay raises, except for.
District court officer.
District court officer.
I think. This is the motion, say, to adopt for twenty-five budget with the limited changes on the table. Mr. Miller, second motion, any discussion? Better call her up.
Ms. Masina?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Camper Miller?
Yes.
I'm gonna wear a gurn.